Judy Morris is with us, Dottie, our coroner, Bob McQuaid. Who is that in the center? I'm sorry? I can't read the name on there. Tony?
He's the center square.
Okay. And then we've got down in the bottom. Who is that? I can't read that one either. Who's in the bottom? Jake?
Yeah, Jake Pratt.
Sorry.
Public Defender's Office.
Okay. My apologies. All right. So, we will begin and we have our roll call. And first item, Madam Clerk, any changes to the agenda?
No, they're not.
Okay. First thing, item is unfinished business.
Mr. Chair, I move to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
Second, all those in favor state aye?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. First item is award of bid 20041 Ada County Coroner's Office Cooler-Freezer Expansion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner LaCiando. Today before you, we have bid 20041, the Ada County Coroner's Office Cooler-Freezer Expansion Project. And the evaluation team would like a little more time to review the bids and request that the award recommendation be tabled to May 19th, 2020.
Okay. And if we have a motion on that?
Okay, Mr. Chair. I'm going to move that we table the award of bid 20041 Ada County Coroner's Office Cooler-Freezer Expansion to May 19th, 2020.
I will second. All those in favor state aye?
Aye.
Aye? And the motion carries, that will be retabled. The second one we have is award of bid 20047 Ada County Landfill Wellhead.
Yes, Mr. Chair and Commissioner LaCiando. Today we have the award of bid 20047, the Ada County Landfill Wellhead Conversion and Gas Fitting Purchase 2020. And as you recall, last week, we had a protest from one of our bidders who bid on the project. They wanted a little bit more clarification on the numbers that we had, that were submitted by the other bidders. And so, we worked through their protest and we did verify all the bidder's numbers and to the satisfaction of the protesting bidder. And they did send us a letter withdrawing their protest and that they are satisfied with the results.
Okay.
So with that, I think we can move along to the awards of the projects. And
Does the board, does you have a recommendation for the board?
I do, I have a recommendation, award letter here, if you'd like me to read it into the record.
Sure, that would be great, thank you.
To the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding bid 20047. Dear members of the Board, after reviewing the bids submitted, it is recommendation of the evaluation group to award the purchase orders for bid 20047 to the following bidders and divisions as the lowest responsive bidders. The bidder is Core and Main LP for HDPE Thermal Butt Fusion Fittings Division in the amount of $21,652.88. HDPE Electrofusion Fittings Division in the amount of $15,147.28. Specialty Landfill Gas and Leachate Recycle Components Division in the amount of $185,931.47. The second bidder that we're awarded to is Isco Industries for HDPE Pipe Division in the amount of $1,589. The PVC Pipe Division in the amount of $7,586.51. And finally, the Butterfly Valves Division for $32,642.56. We did have two non-responsive bidders for this project. One was Isco Industries and they were non-responsive in the HDPE Thermal Butt Fusion Division for bidding an incorrect quantity. And also, we had Dot Energy Solutions Incorporated, they were non-responsive and the HDPE Electrofusion Fittings Division for bidding the incorrect quantity as well.
Okay. So, Commissioner LaCiando, did you want to have any discussion on this matter?
My only discussion is that I'm not going to be able to read that all back to you. I started to read the teak notes. So I'm wondering if I can just make a motion to accept these recommendations.
I would, I would say yes, as read into the record, that would probably be appropriate.
Any other discussion before I do so?
None for me, anyone else? Nope? All right, I hope the Chair will entertain a motion.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I move to accept the recommendation of the Evaluation Committee and award bid 20047 Ada County Landfill Wellhead Conversion and Gas Fitting Purchases 2020 as read into the record by our Purchasing Manager.
Second, all those in favor state aye?
Aye.
Aye? Eyes have it, motion carries. Thank you very much. All right. Next, we have new business. Resolution, Resolution 25, I'm sorry, let me get this. 2513, Resolution for Increased Spending Authority for COVID-19 Expenses. And this was to move additional funding specifically to cover the cost of continuing our COVID-19 issues. A lot of this related to the Expo Idaho Satellite Court, things of that nature. Commissioner LaCiando, any other?
Mr. Chair?
I'm sorry?
Yeah, you'll need to open a public hearing, see if there's anybody that wants to testify.
I'm sorry, thank you. Thank you.
No worries.
It's right below, it's right in front of me. Okay, and with that, the public hearing is open to see if we have anyone here to offer testimony on this issue or anyone online. Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and proceed with the adoption of the resolution 2513.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move to approve Resolution Number 2513 as listed on the agenda.
Second, all those in favor state aye?
Aye.
Aye? Eyes have it, motion carries. Okay, licenses. Renewals and well, the Chair will entertain a motion on the licenses.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the licenses as listed on the agenda, including one new license and 27 license renewals and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
A second, all those in favor state aye?
Aye.
Aye? Eyes have it, motion carries. Clerk's Office.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Commissioner LaCiando. Couple things, one great thing is last week, on Thursday, we learned that for the second year in a row, the Clerk's Office was ranked one of the top 10 best places to work in Idaho. We're certainly proud. It was exciting to be able to celebrate our successes. As you can appreciate, I've got my custom mask here celebrating our top, our top 10 finish in best places to work. So we had a little fun in the office on Thursday celebrating that with all the other businesses and other entities that were participating in that. And then, in terms of an elections update, I had suggested last week, you know, that we would have doubled participation. We're well beyond that, so we've issued 76,000 absentee ballots so far. But I think more astonishing is that doesn't include yet the 16,000 requests that we received at the end of the week following the mailer from the Secretary of State's Office. So we are today bringing on additional temp workers and trying to get as many bodies as we can while still maintaining some social distancing in the elections warehouse to handle the huge volume. Both of the requests coming in as well as the ballots coming back to us. It's becoming quite the task. Our office has a great visualization that we've created on our website showing how this election compares an absentee's to any others. And we're well past two to three times any other election in terms of the number of ballots that we've mailed out. So it's a huge undertaking at this point.
Maybe it will turn out to be a good thing that people realize they can vote from home.
Well, it's going to be interesting to see where this takes us in the, in the long run. I'll also mention, last week was budget submission, so county departments have all submitted their budgets. Tim's been working with everybody, so next week, we'll be convening with you guys to give you an update on what the cumulative budget looks like and kind of start that process as we head into June and all our budget deliberations.
Okay. Any other, any questions for the clerk? Hearing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Claims Journal.
Mr. Chair, I move to authorize payment of claims on the Claim Journal dated May 8th, 2020.
A second, all those in favor state aye?
Aye.
Aye? Eyes have it? All right, Personal Action Forms.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Personal Action Forms as included on the agenda, including three conditional pay increases, six introductory period pay additions, eight lease with pay, four miscellaneous, one promotion, one salary increase, six step increases, shift's pay plan, and that this agreement sheet may not apply on the Commissioner's Office.
A second, all those in favor state aye?
Aye.
Aye? Eyes have it, motion carries. Takes us to our Assessors' Office. We'll hear our report.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner LaCiando. Your report from the Assessors' Office this morning.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Bob? None?
This morning.
All right. Thank you very much. Tax Cancellations. This is 20 tax cancellations, this is further cleaning up something that was in one of the previous OBM's. The Chair will entertain a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the tax cancellations as listed on the agenda, which includes 16 tax cancellations for 2016, four tax cancellations for 2019, and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
Second, all those in favor state aye?
Aye.
Aye? Eyes have it, motion carries. Treasurer's Office.
Mr. Chairman? We have the Ada County Investment Report here in front of me, I submitted it last week. Nothing significant really here to talk about. We continue to see our investments on the short end be reduced. The yields are just dropping on that, especially within money markets and so forth. We made one purchase in April, $3 million Agency Bond. That one had a pretty good yield on it. Coupon of 1.1. Has a call feature on it, which means we could get that bond call next year, I believe that's in April. And if it does, we'll still have a yield to call of 1.09, which isn't bad considering right now, the agencies, two and three-year range are probably .4 and .5. We only had one balancing item, which happens for months, a month occasionally. We had a return item with EMS for $150, that's noted on the back. Other than that, we're in balance and we're in compliance with the Ada County Investment Policy.
Very good. Any questions for our Treasurer?
No, thank you for all you and your team are doing.
Yes, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Grants. Grant Number 2008-A, Grant Application for Public Defender's Commission for Indigent Defense Financial Assistance.
Will I make a motion? I'd love to hear from Tony or Jake.
Yes, do we have anyone to speak to this today?
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Commissioner LaCiando, good to see you this morning. If I'd known you were going to be live in the big room, I would have joined you over there.
That's okay.
We are, once again, applying for an Indigent Defense Grant from the Public Defense Commission. We get this every year, we have since about 2016 or 17. We get in the neighborhood of $1.3 million. It is of great assistance to us. To give you the general idea of what we use this money for, I have five attorneys hired under this grant, two investigators and a legal assistant, so I have eight employees total that this grant pays for. And those employees have been placed in pressure points, if you will, areas where they are needed. So it's been of great assistance to our office. We've also accomplished a couple of office expansions in the last couple of years using the funds to accommodate our employees. And thanks to the Clerk's Office that gave us some of their space, we were able to expand a little bit. So we've used that money for that. We've also greatly ramped up our travel and training. We send our attorneys to conferences all over the country, some of the best trial schools in the country, and it's been a tremendous benefit to our attorneys. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right. Any questions for Tony?
Not at this time.
All right. Chair will entertain a motion.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I move to approve Grant Number 2008-A as identified on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
A second, all those in favor state aye?
Aye.
Aye? Eyes have it, motion carries.
Mr. Chair, before we move on,
Yes.
I want to take a moment to recognize Tony. Normally, I might, we might like to do this in the public hearing room and kind of make a to-do out of it. But I did note that this month, Tony is completing 25 years of service to Ada County. No, where, where has my hair gone, is that right? And I just, you know, what a tremendous career of service to this county, especially in public defense, knowing how challenging that can be. Just a real testament to your public servant heart. And just so grateful for all that you've given to this county and certainly building what we all know to be the premier public defense shop in the state of Idaho. So, thank you very much.
And I will absolutely second that. Very good.
Thank you very much. I would just, I would just say briefly, I appreciate it very much. Ada County is a fantastic place to work. The people here are like none other. Everyone in this room, virtually and in person, the department heads throughout the county are a pleasure to work with. Ada County is a special place, it's my privilege and honor to work here, thank you.
Thank you for your service. All right, Landfill. Relief of Victims for Illegal Dumping Discussion. Morning.
Good morning. Hello, everyone. Commissioners, we have one item to discuss regarding the landfill today. And that's relief for victims of illegal dumping. And what this is, is the Sheriff's Office has contacted us saying occasionally they have some property owner that is, has had someone else dump their garbage on their property. And they file a police report and of course, if they can find the perpetrator, they charge that person. But if they cannot, they're asking if we would consider waiving the fee for those people to dispose of the garbage that was dumped on their property and if we would not charge them for that disposal. I asked, you know, how often this happens, it's pretty rare. We imagine it'd be probably less than $500 a year type thing. But we'd like to probably go ahead and just take care of that fee for people that were, they're the victims.
Okay. Would this most likely then be a scenario where a, a request for relief is following a police report? That there's been some illegal activity?
That's correct. We would not pay for it unless they, they filed a police report and they actually investigated it, tried to find who did it, took some action to try to get to the bottom of it before they just turned to us.
Eliminates people just saying, somebody else dumped like this garbage and I want to dump it for free.
Exactly, there has to be a police report.
Okay, very good. Any other questions?
No, my only, I guess it's not a concern, but just a note, could we make sure that we're documenting this in the cost of service study model? Given that this is an enterprise fund, we just need to make sure that we're showing those, those costs and where they're allocated, because it all relates to what we charge folks for tipping fees. So, I'm sure you'll take care of that.
And then, I don't, there's nothing before us right now, is this going to come in a more formal request?
Right.
Okay, perfect. Excellent. If there's no other questions, thank you very much. All right, Approval of Minutes, Item Number 11.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
A second, all those in favor state aye?
Aye.
Aye? Eyes have it, motion carries. Okay, Expo Idaho.
Mr. Chair, for both this and Barbara Park, I'm obviously prepared to make those motions. I just want to make a note for the record that we've all, as time goes on, continue to be monitoring and working in close consultation with Central District Health about what's the appropriate level of gatherings at any of our facilities. I'm afraid we're in for a marathon, not a sprint here, so just making a note of that before I make this motion.
I agree, and these are late in the year, obviously, but we aren't there yet and we don't know what's going to happen at that point, I agree.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move to approve the One Interim Event Agreement as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
A second, all those in favor state aye?
Aye.
Aye? Eyes have it, motion carries. Parks and Waterways, two events there. One in November, one in December.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the Two Barbara Park Education and Event Center Agreements listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the Board.
A second, all those in favor state aye?
Aye.
Aye? Eyes have it, motion carries. Agreements. We have four agreements.
Unless there's any discussion, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the four agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the Board.
A second, all those in favor state aye? Did you say aye, Commissioner LaCiando?
Aye.
Aye? Eyes have it, motion carries. Just wanted to confirm. Indigent Services. Need any discussion on this?
I can make a motion.
Okay, Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to accept the recommendations of Indigent Services staff as listed on the summary of cases dated May 11th, 2020, and authorize the Chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the Board.
A second, all those in favor state aye?
Aye.
Aye? Eyes have it, motion carries. Procurement. And I think we're going to Bob here, no? Is opening of RFP 20044.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner LaCiando. Today we have the opening of RFP 20044, the Ada County Flexible Spending Account and Cobra Programs Administration and Retiree Billing and Collection Services 2020. We received 11 proposals for this project. And if you are ready, we can go ahead and unseal those and read them into the record.
Ready?
Mr. Chair, the, Robyn's got those up there, if you'll
Yes.
Read those, each of the firms into the record for us.
Okay, I cannot read those.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to read them?
That would be great. Without a printout, that's not going to work.
No worries.
I can see them too, whatever works.
Diana, do you want to do it then?
Sure, okay. So we have 24-Hour Flex, Application Software Incorporated, doing business as ASI Flex, Connect Your Care, Interflex Payments LLC, doing business as Meriflex, Navia Benefit Solutions Incorporated, P&amp;A Administrative Services Incorporated, Peak One Administration LLC, Proflex Administrators LLC, Ren and Associates, Total Administrative Services Corporation, and Wage Works Incorporated.
All right.
All right, that's all 11 of those.
Okay, and then, I'm assuming you will evaluate those and get back to us with the awarding?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we would like a little time to review the proposals submitted and evaluate those proposals. And we would like to request that this be tabled for final ranking and award recommendation to the June 16th, 2020 Open Business Meeting.
June 16th, very good. If there's no other questions, the Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to table the final rankings and award recommendation of RFP 20044, Ada County Flexible Spending Account and Cobra Programs Administration and Retiree Billing and Collection Services 2020 to June 16th, 2020.
Second, all those in favor state aye?
Aye.
Aye? Eyes have it, motion carries. Hear from you in June.
All right, thanks, Commissioner.
Thank you. All right, Miscellaneous. Leave Policy Changes to Employee Handbook. And I must, and ratify waiver to accept donated, oh, to the, accept the donated hand sanitizer. I think Cassie, will we hear from you first on the leave policy changes to the employee handbook?
Thank you, Chair.
Good morning.
Commissioner LaCiando. For some background, last, last summer, we had eight people from around the county come and we discussed multiple employee benefit enhancements. So, what the two easiest to implement and what the Board had agreed to adopt starting June 1st would be a bereavement leave policy and a new parental leave policy. The legal has reviewed the policies to put into the handbook and they're now up for you to approve. Happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Any questions?
No questions, just a comment for those watching along. You know, this is something that's helping us keep pace with the state of Idaho with City of Mardi and City of Boise, really allows us to attract and retain employees to Ada County.
All right, very good, thank you. And the Chair will entertain a motion.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I move to adopt the leave policy changes to the employee handbook.
Very good, a second, all those in favor state aye?
Aye.
Aye? Eyes have it? Very good, thank you, Cassie. And then, this is to ratify a waiver, we've had a bunch of hand sanitizer, some large drums of hand sanitizer donated to the county by, I think it's Tito's. And they would simply like us to sign a waiver stating that we're not going to sue them for giving us, giving us a beautiful gift. So, with that, if there's no other discussion, the Chair will entertain a motion.
All right, I move to ratify the waiver to accept donated hand sanitizer signed by Commissioner Kenyon on May 8th, 2020.
A second, all those in favor state aye?
Aye.
Aye? Eyes have it, motion carries. With that, we will be, unless there is any other discussion or matters to take up?
I have a small matter.
Okay.
I have noted a Gonzaga Bulldogs banner in Steve Rutherford's office and I would just like to note for the record, that is approved.
Oh, God. I'm sure we're going to make a motion to have it taken up and destroyed or something. All right, with that, we will be at recess, thank you all.
Right.